Participate in STEM activities at school, just as all kids do. This won't be possible unless we demonstrate what they can do and what our students are capable of. So, we're developing an online computer science class for students. It's not easy, and when it's available, it really will be the first of its kind to deliver accessible content and skills in industry-recognized programs like Java and Python. That's a pretty big deal because industries recognize what that means. Our leadership at the Council of Schools for the Blind, we can leverage whatever innovations we come up with, share that with other schools, just as we learned from other schools for the blind. We're working with KU Department of Molecular Biosciences. We'll have a DNA Day at our school, just like many other schools do. And I mentioned a machine. We're creating a maker space. So, that machine in the upper right-hand corner is a laser engraver. And again, we don't propose that everybody's going to be a machine tool and die person, but we want kids to have experiences with these things so they can get their hands dirty a little bit, have some experience, take that back with them. So, just some of our partnerships that we have going. Last week, we were one of 100 schools receiving an Accessible Chain Reaction STEM Kit from Garver USA. They're an engineering firm, but really more importantly than the donation is the opportunity to participate in some of the clubs that they sponsor. So, we can provide our kids a chance to develop relationships with non-disabled peers. That's really one of the biggest things, aside from just the technology. I mentioned Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and this is a bad slide because it's hard to read, but these are a list of some of their programs that they offer at the Technical Education Center. We've been in some intensive conversations with administrators out there, Dr. Alicia Hooks and Marshall Dominguez, to expand the entry and completion of students who are blind visually impaired from across our state in some of these programs. Our kids come to our school and they want to participate in these things, but sometimes they struggle to get into the program, and then completing those programs can be difficult. So, there are some barriers to that, and our long-term goal is to bring more students into these programs so they can experience them before they, and even before they finish high school. They shouldn't just land as 19-year-olds. They should come as 16, 17-year-olds and start to learn about what's available. So, that's an important partnership. We're working with Dr. Karthik Muralli, Director of USC's Digital Health Lab, Chris Lee from Akido Labs in Los Angeles, to develop a mobile app that will help our field services collect data. I mentioned that earlier. It's more than about our efforts, it's about the effect of what we're doing. They have a technology startup accelerator that empowers young, talented entrepreneurs to bring transformative products and viable companies to market through ongoing mentorships. And they contacted us. I asked them, "Why us? Why not Texas or Perkins or somebody like that?" And they said, you know, they had got the attention of our STEM work. They'd seen that online. They called us about that. And then later, they said, "We came to you because we think you have a culture of innovation, you're willing to take some risks, and those are the types of schools and companies that we want to work with." So, we're thrilled. Best of all, it's free. And so, we're going to be building a mobile app so we can deliver to you better data. This is an example of what they've built in Los Angeles for homeless. So, they try to take technology and leverage that for social problems, large community problems. This won't be exactly what we have, but it'll be something similar to this. So, we're excited about that. You know, what we have now unfortunately is kind of Excel spreadsheet, paper napkin stuff, which is, you know, how many miles did we travel? Some of this can be passive technology. You can capture this stuff without even pushing a button on your phone, and these are the kind of things that they can help us with so that it's not so burdensome. In the medical world, in the social services world, if you have to go back and remember and enter what you did earlier in the day, it's inconvenient and you forget it. If it's real-time workflow, passive technology, then it's captured automatically. So, that's just one example. The Cosmosphere. We sent our field services team to begin working with the Kansas Cosmosphere, and I'm really happy to report they're going to work with us to make their programs more accessible to our students. And they're in the midst of some renovations, so the timing was right for us. We'll be arranging field trips with them, creating accessible modules, and they'll host a White Kane Day event there next year. The Cosmosphere is really amazing. It's an amazing resource for Kansas students, and I think this collaboration will make it more accessible for our students. So, we're excited about that. The reason we're excited is because we sent kids for the first time this year in a very long time to Huntsville, Alabama, for the Space Camp. They have a camp that's completely accessible, built from the ground up, for kids who are blind visually impaired. This is pretty transformative stuff. They're not just working on computers and sitting behind desks. They're climbing large poles, they're scuba diving, they're getting experiences that typical astronauts would get. And so, we sent three kids and we continue, we're going to continue to do this, not only for our kids, but we'll have an application process for kids across the state who want to participate in this, but we can link it to what we're doing with the Cosmosphere. So, that's really, I think, another exciting thing. I mentioned that the navigation system we've got going, Click and Go Maps was on our campus for three days late October. It's going to allow anybody, blind, low vision, sighted, the ability to navigate our campus with step-by-step accurate information. They have public transit projects underway in New York City, they're in Minneapolis, they're in Nashville, and they came to KSSB, and we expect in March this will be complete. So, this is exciting technology. You'll see it in airports, public transit, you'll see it on college campuses, and now we're going to have it on our campus so we can get more information to our kids. Just as we use Google Maps, we want to give kids information, and they tend to really adapt to it quickly. We're meeting community needs as well. A couple of organizations. We did open a new Head Start with Open Minds on the south end of our Johnson campus, so they're now in operation. And then Stitching Change is a grassroots project to help refugee women empower themselves, so it kind of fits within our mission. They'll be in Irwin Building, probably starting at the start of the new year. We also participate, as I mentioned, in businesses. So, for the fourth year, our students have represented our school at the Chamber Best of KCK event. They learn to market themselves with business representatives. It's really just one benefit of our involvement with the KCK Chamber. You can see some of the photos from this year's events. We're still down at Apple Store, so they do workshops for our teachers on Voice Over and GarageBand, and our students also get those classes. So, we're continuing our partnership with Apple. We're getting a new playground. I'm pretty committed to getting a playground on our front porch. If you drive through that circle, drive it. The one we have isn't so pretty and attractive, and we'd like to start a preschool program. So, this is going to be a way for us to draw attention in a positive way to our school. Here, some of the representatives from BPU were on campus. They had donated $19,000 to kick off that campaign. We have some other donors lined up, and we're excited about that possibility. Our kids are running not only a coffee cart, but now they're expanding into lunches and building websites and really taking off with this sort of as a business venture, so we can build this into something that other kids too will come to us with and say, "What does it mean to run a business? What are the skills that I'm going to need? Inventory, marketing, social skills? These things are really, really critical, and we couldn't have done that without Messenger Coffee and Cause Coffee." We're still out in the state recruiting hard here. You can see one of our staff, Kylie Kilmer, is down at Wichita State. I'm going to go with her to K-State March 2nd to recruit. We need good, young teachers who want to come into our field and be a part of this work, so we're working hard on that. Some of you attended the Vision Symposium. I want to thank Dina Horst and Ben, I think Ben Jones was there. Thank you for coming to that. It was a good day. We had 80-plus educators. It was the second year in a row we've had that kind of number, so we're thinking we're making some traction. We'll do a family summit in Salina in the spring, in April. Just pulling that together right now. White Kane Day is a big hit for us. Here's some of our students. I put one of our students and the teacher down there. They were back at it at 7:30 the next morning. I was thrilled to see them out there bright and early the very next day. Some of the schools that participated in that, we kind of had four locations, KC Area, Salina, Wichita, and then we did something in Garden City, and those were some of the schools that participated in that. The ASSTAC Career Fair, Ben Jones, thank you. Ben's not here, but I wanted to thank him for lining us up with that. We had a lot of fun. We do so many partnerships with Theater for Young America. We do accessible arts with the Kansas City Symphony. Great partners for us. And then two events I want to invite you to. Of course, Braille Challenge, we'll have an event at KSSB February 14th, Derby February 29th. Expect big numbers if we don't have a snowstorm. And then, of course, our summer school is gearing up. We're going to run these concurrently this year, Kansas City and Hays, and we expect to have numbers as big or bigger than ever. So, just a really quick, short, fast update. I know, I want to just convey to you my deep appreciation and gratitude for your support. I speak for the staff and our students that we really couldn't be here without your support. So, thank you. I'll stand for questions now.
John, thank you for your presentation and sharing with us all the various things that you've got going on for all your kids.
Thank you.
That's great. Board members, questions? Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm thinking of our last visit, I think it was our last visit where William Kayler was our presenter. What would you say should be our major takeaway from that visit? I mean, I know what I took away, but what do you think?
I think just reflection on how we're preparing teachers to come into our field, what's realistic for them, what avenues do they have to become teachers? And I think that was my takeaway from it, just really thinking critically, challenging some of the assumptions we have. Are we asking them to do too much? Are we supporting them enough? You know, who do we work with to help in this, you know, mission to draw young, bright professionals into our field? It's hard. We face some of the same challenges that all schools do, and we don't want to get, you know, further behind. We don't want to push people out of the field. We want to support them. So, our job is really, once we hook them, is to make sure that we can support them and they feel good about the work that they're doing. We're really trying hard to do it from A to Z. So, get them into the field and then support them all the way through, whether they're our employees or not.
So, would you say that one of your goals is to keep a similar timeline to other teachers, say typical teachers, even when your teachers have to have O&amp;M training and some other things?
Right. I mean, that's the challenge. They don't come, they have to have typically a degree as a teacher first. That's the first step. And then they usually go through a master's level program, and it's pretty intensive for teachers visually impaired, at least a two-year program. And comms are typically a three-year program. So, this can be tough, and a lot of times they get a little bit of fatigue going through these programs, and they want to know that there's something at the end of it that they can actually work with the kids who are blind visually impaired. So, our job is to get them excited, to keep them motivated, and give them the tools so that they can continue to feel good about the work that they do.
Thank you, John.
Other questions? Janet Wall. Thank you, Madam Chair. I always ask about this teacher recruitment. Do they have to go some other state to get the training? I mean, we don't offer it, I see you're going to K-State and all these other schools. I don't think we offer it, do we? Or even for the deaf?
We don't have, excuse me, our state does not currently have an institution that offers training for TVIs and/or comms. It can be basically a difficult money game because they need to have enough revenue, and they have to recruit a teacher to oversee the program. And we're getting more involved in some of the universities. They're asking us to do some of the teaching, which isn't a bad thing. We think we have very talented staff who can do the teaching, but it does raise questions about capacity and what is our role in supporting those institutions. I'd love to see Kansas dollars stay with Kansas institutions, but it is hard to find a university who would be willing to start a program here in Kansas.
Well, that's going to be a real challenge. But anyway, thank you so much. I'm really appreciative of what you're doing. I'm especially so appreciative of the outreach. Thank you. Other questions? Board members? Okay, John, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, and I'd certainly invite you and Luanne to hang around afterwards as we had the coding opportunity with the students back there.
Definitely stick around. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, great. Okay. Luanne, Luanne Baron from the School for the Deaf. Welcome, Luanne.
Well, good morning, everyone. I wanted to give you an update on the Kansas School for the Deaf. There's no noise. Oh, there it goes. Okay. Okay, we're working now. All right. I am here to give you an update on all of the things that are happening at the Kansas School for the Deaf since my last visit here for your board meeting. And the first thing I wanted to be able to say is to announce our accreditation process that we just went through. Obviously, we did make it through the process. The process itself was very comprehensive. It was very thought-provoking. It was an 18-month-long self-study that we started with, and we collected about 800 responses to the various surveys that went out to community, employees, students, and staff. And that gave us a better picture of the different areas that we obviously have our strengths in, and then areas that we need to focus on for improvement. The CESD visiting team was comprised of four individuals who are leaders in the field of education, in deaf education. They were there for three and a half days on the campus. They studied our self-study reports. They did an internal and external scan of the school and the community. They engaged with the school, and again, it was a very intensive study that we went through and that they went through. As far as the CESD report goes, when the visit was completed, we had an all-school staff and student assembly for the exit conference at the end of their visit. They covered with us what our areas of strengths were and what we needed to work on. And they did announce that they would recommend accreditation to the CESD board, full accreditation for their meeting in April. The board does have to vote on that. I'm not sure if they're meeting in January for a virtual meeting or their regular meeting in April, but that was the visiting team's recommendation that we receive full accreditation. It was very exciting. We know that we're doing great things, but it's nice to have an outside team come and validate what we're doing with our students and with the community. It states on the PowerPoint that the final report would be submitted in six to eight weeks. The day that I sent the PowerPoint to Peggy is the day that I received the full report, and so I'll be sending that on to the commissioner today to be able to share with the rest of the board what the report looked like. I did pick a few things from the report that I wanted to share with you that you were part of. There were 12 standards. One of the 12 standards were government and governance and leadership, and this was one of the commendations that we received from the team, and this applies to you as our state board. And they saw a very obvious, healthy relationship with the board, the Department of Education, the legislature, and the governor, universities and school districts, and they noted that to be one of our strengths. And so, congratulations to all of you for that. And also, I did share with them that that push came from the Board of Education wanting us to do more in the state and to have our mission and our energies go more towards outreach and that emphasis, and they were quite impressed with that. And so, thank you to all of you, and congratulations to all of you for that. Another example of a commendation that we received was for our outreach services and our statewide programming and supports. They recognized that we have a very strong outreach program. They wanted to ensure that children throughout the state are receiving the services that they need, and they saw that with the programming. And we had approximately 20 different areas of commendation and then about 20 areas of needs for improvement. Some of those are related to our transition program. They felt as though we could improve in the transition programming, and so we'll be focusing on strengthening our current program and having it not just be on the campus-based program, but also working with districts throughout the state. One example is that there was a student, oh, another commendation was that there was a student that complained about the cafeteria food. And so, that created a concern because possibly the students don't understand that we have to follow nutrition guidelines and so forth, so that's education for the students. But most of the report was very positive. Next, I wanted to talk to you about our STEM programming. We do have two clubs that are happening. One is a VEX Robotics Club at the high school level. The second is at the elementary level, which is an after-school activity where the students are doing robotics. And then at the middle school level, we have a quarter-long course that's called Lego Mindset V3. And so, I wanted to talk about the VEX Robotics Club with you. This is completely funded from an outside source, a university, the National Technical Institute for the Deaf, which is in Rochester, New York. For short, it's NTID. It's the Regional STEM Center NRSC, and they have a mission to support schools for the deaf in the southeast portion of the country, and they want to see successful STEM relationships and activities postgraduate. In addition to those states, they're supporting VEX Robotics Clubs for any state school for the deaf in the country that would like to participate in that. So, through those collaborative grants, they're able to establish those STEM robotics clubs for free at no charge to the school. The only requirement that we have to meet is that we would participate in the national competition, which we will, in February of 2020. NTID did recognize the lack of STEM-related curriculum for deaf and hard-of-hearing kids, and that is a true fact. And again, they recognize that as a need, and they were able to find the funding to support the schools to have more of those programs at the club level. For KSD STEM curriculum, that was lacking before this event took place, and we didn't have qualified staff to be able to do that. So, NTID was able to provide training for staff so that the students could participate in that. So, they actually sent people out from NTID to train our staff to be able to do that, and it was hugely beneficial. We do have a team of seven students and two coaches at this point, and it's an excellent opportunity for our students to become part of the NRSC. And this is the first year that we are doing this, and they're really enjoying it. We also will be sending our team to different schools to watch their competitions, to see what kind of level of competition to expect when it's their turn. It's a completely new concept and idea, and they don't have an idea of what that would look like. And then the mindset E3, again, is for middle school students, and it's very, very basic. The course is only one quarter. And the focus there is engineering, design, construction, operations, applications of robotics, and then they're using Lego, the Lego system at this point for easier designs for the students to be able to use, and the students have been very engaged in that during that class. There's still a need for more of that programming as early as possible, and so hopefully that will lead in the future to an implementation of different units throughout the curriculum. And so, that would include robotics and coding and building, so I'm excited for the next presentation. I would like to see what's happening in that area, and we're looking for collaborations with other schools as well. And so, the key concepts of engineering are used on a daily basis during this course, and then that would then become more transition opportunities for students as they graduate. I went to, our students attended the ASSTAC Career Expo, so thank you to Ben for inviting us there. We had a three-hour drive to Hutchinson. We brought our entire high school out to go through the Career Fair, and when they arrived, they had a lot of post-secondary exploration opportunities. They got to see two-year colleges, four-year colleges, different certificates that were available, apprenticeships, business partnerships, all within the Hutchinson area. And they had the opportunity to talk to those different representatives and talk about different types of jobs. Our students were engaged. They each have an individual plan of study, and so they have a pretty good idea of exactly where they want to go and who they want to talk to. So, they were able to target those booths, and we decided that we will send our students every other year. We host an on-campus Career Fair that the students would attend in the alternate years, but they did find it very beneficial for our students to attend. So, thank you, Ben, for that invitation. Next, I'm going to talk about our Deaf Mentor Program. The Deaf Mentor Program provides mentors who are deaf to work in homes with families that have a deaf or hard-of-hearing child. We hired nine deaf mentors last year, and the program grew, and so we needed more. And this year, we hired eight more, so we have a total of 15. They just completed three days of training through the Sky High Program, and that's a curriculum that we use for deaf mentor. And they not only focused on teaching ASL, but they focused on families with newborn children, how to help them to learn how to communicate with their child at a very early age. And again, we have a total of 15 deaf mentors, and there's more and more need that's happening in the Wichita area, and so we're searching for mentors in that area to begin working with families. The mentors work with the families on a weekly basis. Not all of the deaf mentors are from the Kansas School for the Deaf or employed at the school. They are out in the community in other areas, and so they're able to work in the area that they live in. They get paid for mileage, and they get paid for their time, and they're committed to being able to support those families on a weekly basis, and it's a very successful The map that you see now shows the Early Start Intervention Services that we have. We recently hired a staff person that lives in the Wichita area, and you can see from the map, in August, we started with seven infants and toddlers that that person was serving, and the number has now grown to 20. Looking at the map, the counties that are in light blue are the newer counties that we've gone into. Oh, excuse me. Dark blue are the newer counties, and light blue are the counties that we were working in in December. So, where you see a slash in the county, that's where the numbers are increasing. And so, this early intervention specialist does drive the distance to visit the families. Again, she's already at 20 infants and toddlers on her caseload, and so we're really hoping to be able to expand more into the northwest part of the state. We are now able to collect some really great data. We've been able to keep track of those services and where those kiddos are. We have a nice, I had a very nice meeting with Burt Moore last week, and we had a great discussion on how to get more accurate data, and we're going to be working together on finding out how we can be able to identify all of the kids that are in this state that are deaf or hard-of-hearing. At this time, we don't have those accurate numbers, and so it was a great meeting with Burt. The next slide is representing our new parent support group, and it has a new name. It's not a new group, it has a new name, and it stands for PATHS, and it's not an acronym for anything, they just liked that word. And so, this represents the different events and activities that have been happening throughout the state, and then the ones that are coming up in the spring as well. The families are very interested in being able to network with each other and socialize and have contact just with other families that have deaf or hard-of-hearing kids, and so that kind of interest has grown, and so we're providing the social opportunities for them. We have over 100 participants at many of the events. We, as you can see here, Lewisburg Cider Mill, we had 135. We're having a brunch with Signing Santa on Saturday, and they were expecting 150, and we maxed out at 190. We had to close out the registration because we couldn't take anymore because of space. So, that's a nice problem to have. That's going to be on Saturday. And then we've had programs in Hays and Derby, and we see the number of parents that are interested and engaging in those ways increasing, and so we'll continue to be providing those activities for parents. It's very popular right now. And then this is my last slide. I wanted to be able to show you visually the collaborative work that we're doing in different areas with different organizations. So, starting with DEVI, which stands for Deaf View Image Art. It's a genre of interested and engaging in those ways increasing, and so we'll be, we'll continue to be providing those activities for parents. It's very popular right now. And then this is my last slide. I wanted to be able to show you visually the collaborative work that we're doing in different areas with different organizations. So starting with DVEA, which stands for Deaf View Image Art. It's a genre of deaf art, and it focuses more on the hands and the eyes. So we are, we have a collaboration with the Museum of Deaf History, Arts, and Culture, and we're coordinating the National DVEA Competition. So both the Kansas School for the Deaf and the Museum for the Deaf, for the Deaf are, we are hosting over 500 entries last year, and we're expecting that number to double next, this year in February. And basically, it promotes the culture and the way that deaf education is valued and the life experiences of a deaf person. And then Early Hearing Detection Intervention, EDE for short, are you all familiar with that organization? It's a national organization. And then each state in the country has a state-level organization of EDE also, or a chapter of EDE. And in Kansas, we call that Sound Beginnings. EDE will be hosting the National Conference in Kansas City, Missouri in February this year, and one of our staff people are on the National Planning Committee for the conference in February. And we do intend to send our team to the conference, and at the end of the conference, they'll be coming to visit the school, the EDE representatives and the Museum of Deaf History, Arts, and Culture. And so that's a wonderful collaboration to have with that organization for early intervention purposes, and that is our goal, to be able to reach those kids and then transition as well, of course. CEASD, you all are familiar with already, that was our accreditation body. I'm on the board for CEASD, and they have asked us to submit a call for paper. Normally, people do that on a volunteer basis, but they've asked us to send in a call for paper intentionally, so it appears as though we'll be presenting at the National CEASD Conference in the spring. And then TAZN, Joan Macy has been working with TAZN, and then also working with NASD to be able to establish a date for optimizing outcomes for students who are deaf or hard-of-hearing, education guidelines. And so the NASD organization, which is the National Organization for Special Education, wants to be able to distribute that and, or has distributed that, and they want to follow up with training, and so we'll be hosting that in March. Two people from that organization will be coming out, and we're working on the logistics. So we're very excited for that venture to be happening soon. And then Sky High that you see up here on the PowerPoint is a national organization, and they've asked us to participate in helping them to lead and guide curriculum and training for others in the country because of our expertise and our partnerships that we've been able to develop, the interest of organizations and so forth that want to work with us. And that enriches our current programming and the information that goes out. And so we're doing really wonderful work at the school. I'm very pleased with the staff and the commitment, and do appreciate your support that you've been providing on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, Luanne. First of all, congratulations for the accreditation. Sounds like that was quite a rigorous process you went through, and you and your staff and students and families, everybody's to be commended. That's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful accomplishment to get that accreditation taken care of.
One thing I did forget to add related to KISA, we still are going through KISA accreditation as well. We'll have a team coming out in March for that visit. That date hasn't been established. We are in our fifth year of that cycle, and so we will be duly accredited through the state and CEASD, so you're aware of that.
Very good, thank you. Jim Porter.
Thank you. I really don't have a question, but you know, when I first got on this board and started the process, I was sort of critical of, first of all, the presentations that we got. And I want to tell you that I've completely, you have completely changed my mind, and I appreciate what you've done, because this presentation was significantly different from what we heard five years ago. It was very positive. It talked about the things that are related to our, to our vision. I'm very excited about the outreach programs, and I want to commend both schools for what I consider to be a tremendous job in moving forward to being the beacon in the United States for people with visual, that blind and visual impairments and people that are deaf and hard-of-hearing. You're to be commended, and I appreciate those excellent, that excellent work. I look forward to meeting you, to meeting with you when we do that in the spring, and continue to see great things for the students of our state. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Luanne? Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo Kathy and Ken's comments. I think it's amazing what you've done and what's happening, and, and once again, I'd like to commend you on the outreach, because that's so important, and I think we've, you're really making great inroads into that, but it all looks great to me. Thank you so much for everything, and please thank your staff.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there an executive summary of the CEASD evaluation that we could look at?
I will, yes, there is. I have the full report, and I'll be sending that to Randy today to share with the board. Would you like me to send it to everyone, or just to you, Randy? So you will be receiving the full report soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, I'm going to ask you, I know we're working on transitions, you've been working on that, and are the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind involved in that?
We actually have, we actually have people from both schools that have been invited, and there have been some participation, yes. But that is a very important aspect of the work of the Transition Task Force.
Absolutely, yeah.
Each means each.
Yep, yep. So if you have any questions, John or Luanne, about that, just get with Jim. There's a lot of opportunities there as we look at transitions a little bit differently as we're moving along, we continue to move forward. So any other questions? Well, again, thanks to both of you. I don't know whether we're coming in March or April this year, but I think probably we'll be seeing, I hope we'll be seeing, a lot of these things you've been sharing with us, these STEM-type activities and all of the other.
Absolutely, yes.
That'd be great. Okay, well, thank, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, and please stay around for the coding, which will be coming right up. Okay, we are going to have, this is Computer Science Education Week, and we're excited today to have an opportunity, and I believe Jim McNeese is going to introduce our guest today, and we've got a lot of students in the back, and we're looking forward to coming back there and seeing if you guys can teach us folks about a little bit of coding. We're gonna, we're gonna have fun with that. So, Mr. McNeese?
Oh, we'll have lots of fun, as tech savvy as we are. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's get focused. I'd like to welcome Lisa Roberts-Proffitt and Joy Akins of Flagship Kansas Tech, who are here to help us celebrate and recognize Computer Science Education Week. Flagship Kansas serves the entire state of Kansas, building technology, awareness, workforce development, and education. Flagship Kansas is a member-driven nonprofit organization supported by private funding and built on public-private partnerships. Their focus is to spotlight, support, and promote the ever-growing tech industry of Kansas while providing resources to educators and students PK through 20, with the critical support they need to succeed and thrive in tomorrow's workforce environment. Today, we shine a light on Computer Science Education Week and the powerful opportunities to support students in our state. Our presentation today will give board members a firsthand opportunity to experience technology and coding. Board members, your hands-on tech experience will be led by students from Oskaloosa, Wichita, and Waumego. Board members will learn from students how computer science helps build confidence, problem-solving skills, be collaborative, and boost creativity. I want to thank the students for coming today. So it was a pleasure to have students at the State Board of Education meeting, especially those who will make us look smarter. Lisa and Joy, the floor, or should I say, the computer is yours, please introduce the student leaders, and let's get started. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you all, Madam Chair and others. Thank you very much for being here to celebrate Computer Science Education Week. I became educated and enlightened hearing from the first two schools today about how they're using computer science in their respective schools as well, so it was exciting to hear that. So Joy Akins, along with Amanda Duncan, are two of my flagship Kansas.Tech board members, and we also have support from Union Station Science City, two team members back here, as well as Katie from Code.org. She flew in special today to look at Computer Science Education Week and celebrate it with all of you. But you're not really here to hear me, you're actually here to work with the students. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll let the questions be answered by the students that are here today. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so you ready for us to come on back? All right, everybody, here we go. We're going to learn coding. We'll get started on our next agenda item. First thing I'd like to know, has anybody got a new career lined out that they're going to start doing coding or anything? I think Mr. Porter was kind of making a deal in his spare time that he was going to start doing coding. Well, again, thanks to those folks for coming. It was a great, yeah, yeah, it was really, it was very interesting and a lot of fun to, to work with the students, so we really appreciate that. Okay, we are going to act on new appointment to the Professional Standards Board, and this information begins on page 123 in your agenda, and Michelle is here to walk us through this, so welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Watson, I am here to act for appointments to the Professional Standards Board. We have run those nominees, thank you. There were a couple of board members who provided us with nominees. We've run those, took those to the standards board, and they kind of sort through, do the work for you to look for qualifications, et cetera. So we are recommending Shelley Weir as a secondary English teacher and John Wirick, Superintendent, LaBette County, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So do we need two?
We need two, yes. We are filling the superintendent position that was vacated, and then a public school position that was vacated as well.
Okay, so we do need two. So do we have a motion? Steve?
Madam Chair, since we only have two names, I don't know if we need to do this, but if, if we need to nominate, I would like to formally nominate Shelley Weir of Blue Valley North. She's a secondary English teacher for the position.
Okay, and probably Jim Porter is District Nine is yours. Okay, so it is moved that the Kansas State Board of Education act on the following recommendation for new appointments to the Professional Standards Boards effective upon appointment through June 20, June 30 of 2022. So Shelley Weir to her first partial term representing teacher, public secondary, and John Wirick to his first partial term representing administrator, chief, public school. Okay, so anything else? Why don't we vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. 10-0. Okay, thank you.
Can you list that as Steve's motion and Jim Porter's second?
Yeah, all I did was read it. Yep, that's right. Okay, now we're going to move into our KISA discussion and update, and Michelle is here for that. So board members, what, and we'll probably run this a little bit differently. We've got Michelle and Jeanette, and I know you've got a PowerPoint, but I think probably there will be questions as we go. Typically, we'll kind of go through the presentation and then take questions, but so board members, if you would either raise your hand or plug in, and so we'll kind of do questions as we go, as this is going to be a little bit more informal, and we've got two hours slated, so we've got plenty of time for some good conversation. So, Michelle, Jeanette, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Madam Chair said, we are expecting an informal conversation. We do have a guided PowerPoint to walk through conversation with you, but it is a genetized pleasure to be with you all, to share with you the ways in which we continue to provide accountability to the accreditation system as we support our school systems through a continuous process for improvement. That process, just as a reminder, serves 286 public school systems, 72 private school systems that choose to be a part of the process. So again, interrupt as you have questions, and we're flexible with our time. We've got the presentation divided into thirds. I'll cover about two-thirds, Jeanette, one-third, but whatever, whatever is the pleasure of the board, we're happy to answer those questions for you all. Just as a reminder, this is, these next four slides are broken down, and we broke down the vision chart for you all. We have copies of that with Peggy, if you would like to have copies. So what we do is we work to address the successful high school graduate, the definition that you all have supported and created, and in order to do this, we continue to work on your outcomes for measuring progress. Again, these are just reminders, sort of a discussion on where we've been, where we are, and where we are going with the accreditation process. Continuing along with your vision, how we get there, the, we get there as, as you all have created and supported the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation Process, and to do so, we address those areas of foundational structures and, and in the areas of compliance. Just a reminder of the several things that are a part of compliance, professional development plans, mentoring and induction, educator evaluation, licenser dyslexia has become a part of that, as you all moved yesterday, the vaping task force, their recommendation to you all, that is on there as well, special education, title services, assessments, all those are in the areas of compliance. So we...
Question, Michelle, on the foundational structures, I think, but please help me, I think those are all the Rose capacities, are they not?
Included are the Rose capacities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely. The, yeah, the, yeah, so you've got the tiered framework of supports, stakeholder engagement, equity and diversity, communication and basic skills. Do you want to speak more about that?
No, the last five from communications through post-secondary are the Rose capacities.
Which includes the physical and mental health, art and cultural appreciation, post-secondary and career preparedness. I wanted to just detail the compliance pieces for you. It is our goal within the agency to address those areas of compliance prior to a systems visit, so that if there is an area of concern with any of our systems, we are making that chair and that system aware of that prior to visit, and have devised a process here inside the agency to address each of those areas. Do you want more?
Just as a quick overview, if you remember, KISA had five Rs, and our fifth R was the results R, which we waited until the board decided on their outcomes. So when you look at our vision chart, and you look at the successful high school graduate with the board outcomes, and then you look at the relevance and rigor in those areas for KISA, those results are really the, if you want, where the two merge. So just wanted to...
So if we were, if we were offering you a definition for each of those areas, in the relationship piece, under the relationship R, it's that area of connectedness among people, curricula, programs, projects, communities. That relationship piece is the connection that draws everything together inside the system. Relevance, then, is how to, you, the ability of specific information to meet the needs or strengths of the learner. How is that curriculum, how are the things that students are engaging in relevant to them? Responsive culture is that area where we talk about stakeholder involvement to become a respectful, responsible, involved learner in the learning process, so all the while looking at your culture. Rigor is that relentless pursuit of those things which challenge and provide opportunity to demonstrate growth and learning. So we've kind of defined them for ourselves, and then the results piece, I did provide to Peggy, some of the conversation I think that, that we need to have today is about a month ago, shortly before Thanksgiving or so, we, we sent to the field this notion of, so we've been talking about process for the last two years, and as the... been talking about process for the last two years, and as the agency and you all defined what results look like, we identified some information that we wanted to send to the field, and it did cause a lot of conversation among the field for people to say, okay, whoa, wait, results? Now we're starting to talk about results? What is that exactly? So again, I have another handout for you that is the two paragraphs that share what went to the field, and so that you could see directly what was sent to them. And interestingly, to Jeanette and I, when we started talking about this idea of communicating with the field, it didn't seem that that would be much of an issue, because all the while we have been saying, results matter, results are a piece of the accreditation process. To that end, it's time that we shift the last two years' focus on process to results as a balance of both. And I don't know if you're interested in seeing that paragraph or those couple of paragraphs, okay, they're available for you, but as the agency has divined what results look like, and we identified that to the field and shared that with them, systems began to say, okay, what do you mean by that? And one of the conversations that we were clearly wanting to have with the field was, it's not just about state assessments. There are a plethora of things that could be considered in that results area to measure a system's progress toward the, a continuous improvement process. So I wanted to just throw that out there, because I know several of you may have been contacted with, whoa, wait, what do they mean by results? And hopefully, we're all on the same page, having the conversation that it's way more than just state assessment results. Is that a piece of the puzzle? Absolutely, but it's not the be-all, end-all.
Do we have a question? Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just informed by one of my colleagues, Brother Porter, as a matter of fact, that I was misinformed when it was explained to me back in the days before I even knew the difference between licensure and accreditation, where I was running a math department. And I was told at this school that was licensed, or I'm sorry, it was accredited by North Central, which is now, I guess, Advanced Ed, that if they kept me on staff, they would lose their accreditation. And Jim Porter explained, this is on the Missouri side of State Line, and he said, no, they would not have lost their accreditation, they would have just gotten a slap on the wrist. The issue that I was dealing with was I did not have a license at that time to teach the language of math, something I've been doing for years and years. I still do it. In fact, I have two students to tutor tonight. So what I want to ask is, do you think it's our responsibility to explain to the public the difference between licensure and certification and accreditation? Or is that simply an internal thing for us, and we shouldn't even try to educate the public on that?
So licensure is a piece of compliance toward accreditation.
I understand that. I'm asking about, is it our job to educate the public on these distinctions?
I would hope that, yes, we are able to have that conversation that I just shared with you, that licensure is a piece of compliance toward an accreditation rating.
Parents are just entrusting us with their children to help them.
Responsive culture. Whenever we talk about parents, I like to address that area of responsive culture. How are we addressing the culture that has those questions?
Thank you, Michelle.
Other comments? Okay, all right. So just as a reminder, there are three levels of accreditation, accredited, conditionally accredited, or not accredited. The process includes the outside visitation team. Remember, we're kind of going back to where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. The outside visitation team is led by a chair that the system identifies. Each system chooses their chair. They are trained in the process and logistics, and in the beginning, we kind of did a joint partnership with the Kelly Organization for them to train that first year of chairs. The second year, we allowed service centers to do some of that training, and this year, Jeanette and I decided we needed to pull that piece in, and we have conducted chair trainings across the state at our seven service centers, and we have another one coming in Topeka to provide information for those folks. It is not a requirement that that chair be trained, but it is highly recommended that the chair be trained. The OVT team varies in size. If you are a larger system, you might obviously like to have a larger team. If you're a smaller system, our recommendation has been three members. We ask that that team is based on the system needs, that they provide information in each of those areas that we were, the five Rs that we were talking about during their visit, and that that would depend on the size of your school system, how you would address the size of your team.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Why is it not required that the OVT chair be trained?
So, so let me reiterate what Michelle just said. The OVT members, there's no specific requirement for them to be trained, but the OVT chair is required to be trained. Now, what we don't have in terms of the OVT chair is how often should they be trained yet? Should it be every three years? Should it be every five years? Should it be yearly? Right now, the evaluations that are coming in, we ask, how often do you want training? And the predominantly number of chairs that have attended have said yearly so far, with the understanding, I think, that it's not about the logistical pieces so much as it is skill-building pieces.
Okay, so the OVT chair does have to be trained.
Yes.
Members do not, but you're still working on the process as far as how often the OVT chair needs to be trained. That's, I thought I heard that the OVT chair didn't have to be trained, and I thought, well, that's a concern.
You did, you did. You heard me say they were highly recommended.
I, yeah, I kind of like the required piece for the chairs, what I like.
Initially, I think they were highly recommended, and then our advisory council decided, indicated that we should really require it.
Jeanette Wall has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the committees, I guess, I just don't know this, but the chair and the committee themselves, do they, do they have more than one district? Or, and also, how much time is involved for this? Because I know that we have some chairs that are retired superintendents, or, you know, so, I guess, give me a, how are they made up?
Right.
And how much do they do? Thank you.
You bet. So depending on, again, your school system, for example, if you have a large at-risk population, ESOL population, something like that, I would think it would be great to have some members on your team that have an understanding or background in those areas. I, the system is allowed to build that team however they choose, and again, it would be great if they were thinking about the areas, for example, Mr. Roberts referenced community, perhaps a community member that maybe was an educator or someone that could help you study your area of responsive culture. It might also depend on your goals. If your goals are relative to a specific area, if I'm looking at rigor, then maybe a retired superintendent who built a wonderful curriculum might be, or something, or had a great background in curriculum development, might be a good choice for me. The purpose is for that chair, for that team to come in and be a system's critical friend, to help them look and note the things that are happening in the system and offer other advice, other support, other avenues, other ways to maybe look at their data. I love that notion of a critical friend, a constructive partner, to help guide that process for them.
Do we have another question? Jim McNeese?
In the start of your presentation, you listed the number of schools and districts, public and private, OVT chairs. Do we have enough?
So, no. You also asked about the how many. Again, our recommendation has been not to take on more than you can handle. The time is, it varies on the size of the district as well. The other recommendation we've made to chairs is when you go that day for that visit, make time to complete the report that's required by you and your team that day. Don't leave, because we all know what happens. Life happens, okay? And time and life get away from us, and we don't get that done. So in our training this round, we have said, take the time that day. I like to tell people that typically it shouldn't take more than a day and a half for you to serve in that role. The half-day might be some of those critical conversations you have outside the visit. Jeanette, I hear her say this to folks all the time, take time to visit ahead of time with your system to plan the agenda, to talk about the things that you want to see. It's a partnership between you, the system, and your team. It's the systems accreditation process, but those folks are there to help and to support. If you're a team member, it shouldn't take you much more than that one day, the day to go visit the system. Did I answer your question, Steve?
Jim.
Sorry, Jim, sorry. Did I answer your question?
That's not good.
I know, sorry, so sorry.
Steve's going to feel really bad.
Mr. McNeese, did I answer your question?
Yes and no.
Okay, so-
First, my first question is, do we have enough chairs?
No, I'm going to say we don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, sorry.
You're all right, you're fine.
We don't have enough chairs because they're not volunteering. Have we trained enough chairs? Yes, we've trained over 500 chairs in the last few years, since the, what we would call the zero year to now. We have about 500 and somewhat supposedly chairs on the list. Of those, we have about 300 and something that are chairing right now in one way or another. But some of those are also chairing more than one school, one than more system, one than, more than one district. We did not at the early stage put a cap on how many you should chair. As Michelle said, it should be not more than what you can handle. And at, when we began this process, there was an understanding that service centers could chair some, some systems, and that KLN, who were already working with schools, could also chair some systems, as well as the MTSS folks, that they would be able to chair some systems if they were working with them. And so we allowed those processes to continue in the process through this. So some of those do have more than one system that they are chairing.
And, again, I will say that when that results information came out, the chairs had a heightened awareness of the responsibility of their job. But we keep trying to say, your responsibility is not to make the judgment. You are not there to make a judgment about the system. You are there to be that constructive partner, to be that critical friend, to offer any help or advice or support that you can give. And they, again, those folks take that role very seriously. I say this about our advisory committee and our accreditation review council, that they take the job very seriously, but it is not their job to make a decision. It is merely to be a critical friend, to offer advice and support.
So just for clarity, and I realize some of these questions in the field would be, we know the answer, okay?
You're okay.
But to get it on record, how much are they paid?
They're, they're, they're volunteer.
Oh, really?
It's a very high salary.
How many hours can they expect to put in?
Well, a member, typically a day, a day for the visit, just the member. The chair is going to do that full day, and then what could likely be another half-day, or, it just depends on the level of support the system needs.
So we, we did a survey-
I'm sorry, I need to take that back, because then if they also come to a training?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we did a survey a couple of years back to find out the amount of time spent on a visit and the amount of time, amount of money spent by systems as well. Don't ask me the amounts, I can give it to you all if you want to, I can provide you that information, top of my head. What I can tell you right now was that the time at a visit varied from two hours to a full day. Very few had a day and a half, although we did have some that said a day and a half. And most of those, I would imagine, I didn't go back and, and see what districts answered those questions, but I could only imagine that those might have been larger districts. So that varied in that sense, and the amounts varied from under 200 to over 1,500. And most of those expenses were teacher stipends. However, what I don't know is if those teacher stipends are a result of redesign process that had started also at the same time, because we didn't ask those questions at the time. I'm thinking about redoing that survey, maybe the end of this year for next year, and seeing what might take place. And really, the only reason that I did that survey was because with regulations and stuff, I know that they will come back with saying, what's the cost for each one of these regs? And so I thought that, that I would have a step on up, step up, step on, onto that. And that's the reason we asked, a little bit too prematurely perhaps, but, so we'll ask more specific questions to help.
So the OVT chair and, and, and members are compensated for travel and expenses?
From the school district, a lot of them do. Yep, they do food, food, travel, you know, that kind of stuff. But it's up to the district whether they do or they do not.
But the folks in the field who volunteer for these things are truly volunteers?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, just don't want to lose money.
That's right.
Okay. One of the criticisms of the past is that chairs would be, my good friend would do my school, and, and I would do their school, and, you know, it would be reciprocal, you know, it was, it was, it was more collegial and peer-related, and I say those in a positive way.
Right.
But there was some criticism that, you know, they were whitewashing things or whatever. How do we account, how do we respond to that kind of leadership criticism?
Absolutely. It's a piece we bring up during training, that it really is an opportunity for you to choose that critical friend, and if your best friend can't be that for you, then maybe that's the, not, not the best choice for you. So we have addressed that, especially during training time, and we've learned a lot. I mean, we're in year three of this. We've learned a lot, we've made adjustments, as you do with any process, and one of the questions I get when I'm at training is always, are you finished making changes? Are you finished making changes? I think we're very close. We're getting, we're getting it down to where I think everyone can be happy. The challenge has been, since I took the position in my mind, 286 classrooms, 72 private systems, how do you create one process when they're so vastly different? These systems are all so vastly different. When we work with our private systems, the Lutheran systems have another process that they follow. So I love the open-ended nature of it, but trying to create some things that are similar and that we can hold people accountable to has taken some time to define. So I'm appreciative of the fact that it can be differentiated, I love that. I also need to have some structures with it as well, which I believe the results is a really great place for us to start to look at that kind of consistent piece across all systems.
Hey, we have some additional questions. Jim Porter?
Okay, with your permission, I've got several. Doesn't the OVT chair meet more than just that one day? Don't they, isn't that an ongoing relationship?
It can be. It, again, is very flexible for the system. For example, in my role as superintendent, the first two years of this process, I did identify that chair early, and we did have conversation throughout. Most often, that was by phone or by email. I did neglect to say that if that chair is attending a training, that's another full-day event as well. So to your question, Ms. Wa, it's, it could be about a three-day time commitment for the chair.
Okay, and I have the same concern that Jim had about choosing your own team. That's something that I've been concerned about the whole time. I'm going to give you two examples. I was visiting with a superintendent who wasn't OVT chair at another school district, and I thought he did a really good job, because he had talked to that district, and they didn't, he didn't think they were ready. And so, you know, they, so I wouldn't have any concern there. And I've been told that there is at least one school district that didn't like what the OVT chair says, so they just fired him. That, there's something wrong with the system that that can happen in. I would like for us to at least revisit at some point that process, because I see all sorts of, if we want to be transparent, if we want to make sure that we are accurately identifying what's, what needs to happen in schools and what's best for kids, I'd like to at least revisit how, how teams are put together.
Thank you, I appreciate that comment.
And we could talk about conflict of interest then at that point in time, too.
It's probably a good idea. Ann Mall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I'm thinking even in a small district, a two-hour visit is not adequate. I mean, whether you're big or small, you still have a number of things to look at besides our five goals, then all the S requirements. I know you guys have assured us, they are looking at those numbers, because we have to do that for S as well. And I think a big district, you know, like one of our urban districts, would take well more than a day just to comb through the data. And I'm not going to call them bad schools, I'll say they are schools with more opportunities than they can handle. Is that what we heard yesterday? Because they're out there, that in a big district, those schools can be hidden from view, and I don't want them hidden from view. I mean, that's the one thing that's always scared me about a district-wide accreditation anyway. So are they really digging into the numbers?
So, so again, I would say thank you for your comments, because they're the same conversations we are having as well. That notion of, should a larger system, what should the process? So in our guidance document, we have provided some daily sort of agendas for what that vision could look like, and we've outlined some things that we feel like the system and the chair and the team ought to have some conversation about. Two hours, in my mind, is not a good visit, coming from a smaller school, that's not enough time. If your chair has been with you since the get-go, and they've been there at year one, and they were there at year two, and they've come at year three, and we're here at year four, two hours might be fine, because year three, four, and five, we're monitoring the data, checking for progress toward our goals, right? Couple of hours might work for that. Still seems very limiting to me. If your chair has changed every year- Um, if your chair has changed every year, which I know you all expressed as a concern, a, a two-hour time is not going to be enough time to bring that chair up to speed. So a full day would be our limit on the least amount of time that you could spend in the process. We do provide guidances to things that they should do during that visit. Um, but again, I want you to hear that we have these very same concerns that you all have addressed and continually work to try to address them.
Because they're supposed to look at community surveys and I remember when with Advance Ed, I mean, we had people come in and we talked to them about, are you getting what you need or do you know what's?
Teacher visits, student visits, stakeholder visits.
Yeah, parent visits, yeah, all those stakeholder, we're supposed to, to talk to them too. So are they not doing that as part of this process?
So I think, I think one of the things that would be, um, great for us to bring to you all as a recommendation is to delineate the three to five things that the superintendent, that the board president can agree on, can sign off on and say, we did, we did have an all-day visit. We did share the results with our school board. We are compliant. We agree that these things and have them sign off and commit to a, that process. But, but I, we are not yet ready to identify what those three to five things might be. But I, I love that idea of the superintendent and the board chair signing off to say, we had a visit. That visit was reported to our board, um, et cetera. So delineating what those five things are, having a commitment from the system and the board president that, that say, we did do these things.
And they do look at the district report before they get there, right? I mean, that's all been reviewed.
That's our advice, yes, that they look at the data prior to.
Okay.
That they look at the previous year's report, that they look at the system's latest report prior to the visit.
Not only the district's report, but I know you guys have said every year the schools have to send all this data into the department. And if there are any big red flags, the department's supposed to call them on that, right?
Right, and we have done that on a couple of occasions, had to make those calls.
So, um, our department does ESAT monitoring as well as we have the, and I don't know what Yoda stands for, so.
Youth outcome data.
Youth outcome data that is looked at. And when we do the compliance piece, we ask the different teams whether or not the, if there's any red flags in these areas. And the idea is, um, and I say the idea because it's not into the KISA application quite yet, but in the process of being placed in there, that this information, if there are any red flags, will go to the chair, to particularly the compliance area section, so that then when the chair is in there and the OVT team, they can be asking those kind of questions as well, um, of that. So they'll have a little bit more information from what we do internally as well as what's happening at the district. I will say that when the survey came out and we presented that information to the advisory council and we asked, what do they recommend, if they had any recommendation, as to should we be very specific as to the timeframe within a visit? Um, we did have a chair in there that said, two hours for me was enough because she was contacting and visiting the district on a monthly basis. So that when she went in with her team, she already knew a lot of the stuff that was going on. Uh, but whether or not we correlated the answers to what was happening, we did not. So those are kind of lessons learned of what we need to do the next time around.
So while the OVT doesn't make a judgment, the ARC does, right?
Correct. Based on the information they gather from the system and from that visit, from the OVT chair and the report of their visit.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Jim Porter has another question, then Janet Wall.
R2. Uh, when I heard, I had the same concerns that Andy, when I heard two hours, uh, uh, I'm concerned, you know, we, we have to make sure that when that information gets to us, we know that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing for the benefit of kids. I'm just giving you an example. I was on a review team for St. Louis City School District many years ago. There were 40 of us and it took two, it took four days. We were there almost a week. Uh, and I support, by the way, district level, but, but we visited, some of us, part of that team visited every school, all 100-plus of that schools and made individual reports on each one of those schools. And so when we're talking about, you know, two hours or one day, uh, I have trouble understanding how that can happen and be a, uh, uh, but, uh, I mean, I'll take your word for it, but that's, uh, that's something that, 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 that was a real red flag to me.
Absolutely. Uh, and one, I need to clarify, Steve Roberts' comment on Advance Ed is now Cognia, that shift change, their name has changed again. They were NCA, they're Cogni, and then they're, and now they're, Advanced Ed, and now they are called Cognia. Yeah, so I, I love this notion, and I, the reason why I bring that up is they don't visit yearly. That, that process does not visit yearly like we do. Um, we visit yearly, um, and Mr. McNeese made a comment about the time and effort and so did Ms. Wa. Money becomes an issue? How much time are people giving? And as you said, this is a volunteer piece, so, um, and, and what I would say to that is, again, my chair was very familiar with my system. Local girl that, you know, she, I wasn't, I don't think it was a, this kind of thing because I wasn't her chair, but, um, she knew the system had been in the buildings, new teachers. We visited each of the buildings the first year she came. There was no need to do it again the second year. If your chair changes one year to the next year to, and your team changes, man, you are at a, that just consistency piece. We have that, that very same concern with consistency of process.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the, I'll make sure I have this all straight in my head.
You're okay.
The, the, uh, the superintendent or whoever is supposed to present the report of the committee, the yearly report to the board chair or to the whole board? Is that correct, to the local board?
That's been our recommendation, yes, that after that visit and once you have your report from your chair and, um, yeah, absolutely, you would want to share that with yours, the superintendent would want to share that with their board, with any other community stakeholders. Uh, again, this is a community, could be considered a community involvement process just like any other continuous school improvement process.
And then, of course, that would make it public information, is that correct?
Correct, correct. So, so I might also say that once, uh, for example, if you're a first year, just coming into the system that first year and you fill out your system report and you share it with the board, yes, it becomes a public document then. Let's say year two, you change your mind and don't want that same chair or what have you. That first-year information is still there. That becomes a part of the story. We talk about this as a five-year process story. The, the, the pieces that are submitted to us, no matter what you do with your chair, with your team, will stay a part of your story for the next chair, for the next team, et cetera.
Okay, well, you say that you suggest they should do that. So is it up to the superintendent as to whether or not they share this information?
I suppose.
We indicate, yeah, we indicate the first year that they have to assure that they're, that they have reported to the board.
Uh-huh.
Because they do an initial report for us, uh, the, and we highly suggest that that process be continued. And then we ask of it again at the end of the year, in their final report.
Right, year one and year five, but I love this idea of, I think I hear you all saying there are certain assurances, to expand on Jeanette's vocabulary, that that's shared every year and they assure that that is.
I, as having served on a local board prior to serving on this board, I would like to make sure it was, said it was absolutely shared because I can see times that there might be, uh, they may not want it shared if they aren't pleased with the report.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, one of the pieces of the process is know who you are. Who are you as a school system?
Right.
And sometimes that doesn't look grand. I mean, you've got, we all have areas of deficit that we want to address, but, uh, you heard the word transparency this morning. I, I prefer transparent versus, yeah, a transparent process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Isn't there also within the guidance that you're sharing this with the district site council?
Absolutely. Building leader, leadership teams, district leadership teams. Ms. Mall mentioned, uh, the, her fear of a system-wide process versus a building-level process. We moved from a building-level accreditation system to a system-wide. The thing I will tell you that I love about the system-wide piece is it does bring consistency. It also brings about challenges. If you're a small system, maybe not so much because you have hands-on and you're in that small system and there, everything flows one right to the other. The larger systems, we've had this discussion multiple times. In, uh, i- if you're redesigning or if you've got one building doing a super-duper thing and, and you've got nine or 10 or 11 elementary schools, how do you grow that? How do you expand that? How do you provide for that across the whole system? And again, that's one of the beautiful pieces. We've allowed systems to do that at the level they feel prepared at each building. Every building, again, like a classroom, if you've got nine buildings, could be like a classroom of nine. They're all at a different point A, struggling to get to point B.
Deanna Horst.
My hand-waving nap wasn't working, sorry. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so this, I just, I, I'm just trying to compare systems because I know today we had School for the Deaf, Luanne, Superintendent Luanne Baron was here talking about their accreditation and why they do, do the dual accreditation is because they have children there at night, they're there overnight, um, and it's a totally different thing from just being there like eight to 4:30 or eight to four every day. So what they did, and I went through that process with them, was, you know, they have the volunteers that come in, I think they're paid for traveling and food and stuff, but there's a team of four, they're coming from Maryland, Indiana, all over Chicago, um, to different places across the state. They were there for three days, um, and because Luanne wants that transparency and that's what Jim and others are concerned about, there were 12 or 13 of us in a room and that one of those team members could, could talk to us. We could, all those people in that room could give them feedback. There were parents, stake, a lot of stakeholders. And I mean, I was in there, there were different ones that are, that have affiliation with the School for the Deaf. So when you're talking about a chair going in there, is there a team of transparency where that, the superintendent or principal, whatever, they're, they're not involved in that, which Luanne was not in that room?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So there were fif, I think there were 15 of us and we were there for two hours. And we, then afterwards, we went and met with students and had a dinner and it was more of a, you know, informal setting and she kind of went through the accreditation process of what's going to happen over the next three days so that we kind of knew what was going on and then the report would be, how long the report would take and everything. And, um, and then we had a follow-up advisory council meeting. Once they, once that was approved, they, they found out they were accredited, then we, then we had feedback from, again, similar people, but other people from the community that are involved on that council. So it's very, very transparent because Luanne is not in that room and she does not know what's being asked or what's being talked about or concerns that some of those stakeholders may have. And I don't know if that's something that we do. Maybe we do and I just don't even know that we do that.
So I love this notion of those experts that have a background in, uh, working with children with hearing deficits or sight deficits. That's the creation of a great team, uh, because she, they brought in folks that could support the work that they are doing. Absolutely, absolutely. And, and again, um, each system can decide how they do that. To your point about transparency, if I'm the superintendent, even the building principal walking out of the room and letting my folks have the conversation with that outside visitation team, if someone calls and says, is that allowed? I would say not only allowed, but I would encourage it. Absolutely would encourage that whole idea of transparency.
I'm assuming we do that as well. What the, I mean, they, they want a dual one just because they want one through that eight to four time, so they're going through the KISA. They do, they, they, they want both.
Yeah.
But as far as, is that something that we, we also do or I'm, I'm trying to get that, we have advisory, like a council-type thing of people of a team?
So that, that was the reference, too. I'm not sure someone mentioned district leadership teams and building leadership teams, and those are a part of our agendas that we share with the chair. You want to meet with that district leadership team. You should meet with that building leadership team. Meet with students if you so desire. You can meet with anyone you want to.
Do they do that?
We suggest that they do.
That they do focus groups. I, I, the first couple of years, I think, probably did not happen as much as it probably should because of all the learning with changing how the accreditation process has been. I foresee a lot more focus group meetings th- these next coming years from these systems coming through.
Okay, Randy's been patiently waiting.
And Jeanette, talk, uh, Michelle, talk a little bit about the, the three possible conflict areas. So I'm a chair, the district, uh, isn't reaching out to me very well, I, I'm not getting data very well, I'm frustrated, so that's one piece. Second, which I think you're articulating, I'm the school district, I don't like you as a chair, I don't like you as a team. And then, and you may be getting to this if we, if we, uh, get to it, but there's this ARC and the, and the conflict that could arrive between, uh, an OVT team and chair and the ARC. So I've given you kind of three, but it's all related to conflict within the system as it goes through, just how you advise or how you go through that.
So I'm going to back up and start with the ARC, is that okay?
Sure.
The, the piece I would say concerning the ARC and conflict, et cetera, we've talked about just recently with not identifying who you're looking at. So if, if Jeanette and I and four other people are studying these three systems, we don't know who they are. There's no identifying information so that we're looking at them very open-mindedly. We don't have any, Kansas is not a large state. Everybody knows something about something, right? Concerning school systems. So, uh, taking away that identifying information and, and removing some of the conflict there, we have had in the two years that we have done this, several members say, I'm going to recuse myself from this particular decision because I know too much or I'm employed by that system. So we have been very well aware of that and created opportunity for that. Um, to your piece about conflict on, I'm just changing my mind.
Michelle, can I, can I keep on that side of that? I'm talking about if the ARC is finding a different outcome than what the OBT and the team have been advising for the last five years. I'm talking about that conflict and, and how, how are you thinking about and already addressing where the OBT chair and the team have said, either way, things are great, things are great, and the ARC says, things aren't great? And?
So right now, one of the things that we've been training our, our ARC with is the accreditation criteria that I think the last time we provided you with, which is finally completed and we can give final copies to everyone if we need to. Um, so they're looking at the reports and everything based on that accreditation criteria that has been established at this point in time. We're also right now giving that accreditation criteria out to the field because we don't want any surprises and I think the chairs particularly have been, and the systems that have received them, have been very happy with knowing, oh, this is what they're going to be looking for. Of course, it's like everything else. The concern is now that I know what I'm looking for, will I give that to you? The whole point with the ARC is because the ARC has to report to you as a board, we tell the ARC that they need to make sure that there is evidence reported within those reports that they can use as justification for their decisions at this point. So there might be times when maybe the schools, the school or the chair says, this system is doing great and they're really, uh, I'll use.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and I'll use the community involvement, uh, example that I put out there. Uh, this system is using great and they have great community involvement because the students have done car washes and the community has really participated in it, right? So the ARC is going to probably ask the question about, well, how do you know that? How do you know they're really participating because they want to help the school and want to be involved with the school rather than just going because they need their car washed?
Our mantra has been, as evidenced by what? When the system says we're doing X, Y, or Z, the response is, as evidenced by what? Where's your piece of evidence that says you're meeting your goal or making progress to your goal? There has to be something it is evidenced by. So the outside, or the team is asked, we train them to ask those questions, our ARC is trained to ask those questions. This success criteria, if you will, and the, uh, rubric that we can provide to you outlines things pretty well and we always follow up with, as evidenced by what? Where's your evidence?
So with, also then within the system, as the ARC goes in, this is the process that has been established right now where we're kind of piloting it, if you will, because it's within our KISA application as well. So when the ARC answers the 10 questions that are part of the executive summary that has been developed for you, they will in each section indicate any areas for improvement that might be needed based on what they see. That report, if they have any questions, it is put on hold until we contact either the chair if they need any further information or if they need to, uh, get further information, well, primarily from the chair. Because when the report is done and finalized with any areas for improvement that by, might be necessary, and by areas of improvement, I don't only mean because they're going to get conditionally accredited. It could be that there's areas for improvement even though they're being accredited. We all want to improve, right? I mean, that's the whole thing. So there could be some areas that they choose to say, hey, you can do these things a little bit better. So that report is then sent to the school, who then has to accept that recommendation now before it comes to you as a board. So in the past, we would tell them, we have very limited time, we'd say, hey, it's been So in the past, we would tell them, we have very limited time, we'd say, hey, it's been a, you know, your school is going to be accredited, we're going to go to the board on this day, and it was all verbal stuff. Right now, it will be through a process through our KISA application, where the system, the superintendent and the, and the contact person from the KISA application gets a copy of the report saying, your report has been reviewed by the ARC. This is the accreditation recommendation that's going to the state board, and you need to indicate whether or not you accept this recommendation or you appeal it in any way.
And appealing means you could provide more evidence if you, if you had such documentation.
In terms of saying, wait, wait, no, you know, we have this information, maybe the chair didn't see it at the time or whatever, but we could provide you with the data that relates to that, and we could provide further information.
And I'm not a hundred percent certain if that answers your question on conflict. The other thing I would say about the ARC that we have learned, the systems that are going to come before you in late summer or late spring, early summer, they are looking at now. They've started looking at in, in the early fall. So they're, previously, it was, we didn't take that much time. We, we know who they are, they're identified, they're starting to look at them now, the process won't just happen in the spring. It's, it's, so we're aware of some of the deficits that might be there, some things that they could attend to at visit time, et cetera.
Yeah, and they, and we were asked to inform those systems that were up for accreditation, letting them know what are the areas that are currently lacking in their reports, from the chair's side and from the system's side, because they've been looking. Remember, the ARC, it has availability to read the chair report and the system reports.
The whole story.
They see the whole, whole piece of it. So if the system doesn't, really doesn't like their chair, and there's that conflict of it, they're always told, you know, you selected your chair, so you can definitely indicate that you don't want, you know, want the chair. However, be sure that your reasons for it are valid reasons, because that doesn't mean that you're going to get another chair that's going to not give you that information. Besides that, the reports are available.
Stays a part of the story.
It stays a part of the story. So they would end up having that information. I, I think it would be a little bit maybe different if, if we were maybe assigning those chairs, but we can't assign those chairs. I mean, we're not paying, they don't, they don't work for us, nor do we pay them anything to do that. It would be a whole different process, I think, if we were able to really say, we're going to provide funding to be a chair, and if you're wanting to be a chair, then you have to get this training, you'll be on a list, and we'll assign you to schools that, you know, that were needed. But now we're paying them, right? Now I think there's more investment for them as well. That's not, that's not the case right now. Schools, if they end up having information that they see their report from the chair, and we highly recommend that the system reads the report from the chair. And that's one of the things that is kind of not happening at this point in time as effectively as it should. And a lot of it has to do with the training that we're just doing a whole lot, because we took it over now, you know? But we're telling them, you need to end up reading those reports, you cannot rely on that the chair has really indicated what's really happening in your system effectively.
It's a partnership.
It's a part, right, it's a partnership. So you need to take a look at those reports and see whether or not what's in there really reflects what's happening in your district. And if not, then you need to contact your chair and your OBT and talk to them about, hey, what other information do you need for us to show you in order to write these reports that will reflect these things that I think are really happening in here? And if the chair says, well, I haven't seen it, show me these things, then they could have another visit. We never said that they can't have another visit. We want this to really be kind of that collegial, knowing, hey, we really want to help you. You know, we all have best friends, but I don't know if my best friend would be the one that would let me go out looking like a fool, you know?
Are y'all doing okay? It's a deep topic, and we've been at it an hour or so, are you all right? Because we're only on slide six of fifty-two, so, I'm kidding.
I, yeah, well, I, I, when you told me you didn't think this last two hours, yeah.
I really didn't, I was like, oh, we'll get through that.
Okay, Ann Ma has a question.
Thank you, I don't know when the right time is to ask a question about the board reports that are online for us to look at, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm looking at a board report, a detailed report, okay? And it says, one of the things they have to do is tiered system of supports interventions. And on the right, it says, evidence of plan's effectiveness. And I'm going, okay, what's the evidence? But I can't see the evidence.
Are you looking at a, a system report?
Yeah, what the school district itself reported. So they're saying, well, there's evidence of the plan's effectiveness. I take it that's something the OBT saw, but I'm not seeing.
Right, two, two pieces. The intent is for systems to be able to upload some documentation that might say there's evidence, so we have not yet put that into play yet. It's in play for this spring's visits through IT. We weren't, we didn't have that capacity to upload a document. So if a system says, as evidenced by, they can actually include that document there. You may not, you would not have that for a year one or a year two, it would be, it'd be starting this spring, you, we have that upload option available.
So I take it the OBT, though, gets all the background, and they know what the evidence was.
Correct.
Right, and what we're asking the OBT to do is to be a little bit more specific in their writing about the evidence. It's not all there right now.
Yeah, and I think.
I mean, I hate to say that.
I mean, but what the OBT saw before they went is the actual evidence that they put tiered systems of support in place.
Correct, so, so we have new dyslexia task force recommendations, right? And so there are some pieces that the chair will say, can you show me where you have evidence of these things being implemented? The tricky part about, the more that the chair has to do, the more the chair has to do, you heard Jeanette say there were three hundred and fifty or so of them. We start making that more and more responsibility for them, I think we might lose some of them, that they're going to, and again, it's free.
Yeah, but you can't just, I mean, if the school, we've had school districts put down, yeah, I'm, I'm doing it, and you look at the evidence and know they're not doing it. So you can't just let them say, yeah, there's evidence of effectiveness.
So, so the, the, there's kind of processes in place to check along the way. The system writes their report and says, we're doing X. The chair and the team come in to verify that X is happening or not, and has that conversation. Then the ARC takes a look and says, are you or are you not? Then, then board, you all as well have the opportunity. So we've got several checks along the way. And, and I love this notion of the five-year system, because you could say you're doing it year one, year two, they come in and say, no, you're not, we need more evidence for year three. They have an opportunity to provide that more evidence, it's documented in the report that the chair put in play. Let's say that chair retires and moves to another system. They've got that story, right, from year one to year two to year three, et cetera, that they can go back and review. If I'm a system, ideally, I'd keep you as my chair for five years. That'd be, that would be wonderful, right? But, but we know that's not going to happen, so we have these other checks and balances along the way.
And I, and I. There's another system then, that the, the school district has sent all this data in that the OBT and the team had access to.
When the OBT goes in, so the process that we have been training our chairs right now, and, and I just finished doing this on a Zoom meeting that we had, is, I outlined to them, if you're a chair, just make sure that, one, that you have contacted your, your system to find out when that date for visit has to be. And try to have that visit by the end of April thirtieth, if possible. Because you want to be able to, at least if you're going to have focus groups or whatever, you're going to visit with students, you don't want to, you know, interrupt kind of that last, May is kind of hard. And then we said, if you're a system that's going to be accredited this year, coming up for accreditation, you have to have your visit by May thirty, by March thirtieth. And so we did stipulate those two pieces. We also tell the chair, make sure that you read, that you have access, that you get access through, because they can, through the, through the KISA application, and that you visit with your OV team to read that system update that has been provided to you for this year. Okay? Make sure you end up reading that, and that as a team, you identify by also looking at the questions that you have to answer that year, because they have a report that they're supposed to answer. Make sure that you can glean information to answer those questions, and if you can't glean informations from that, what is it that you need to see, hear? Perceive, no, whatever, in order to be able to answer those questions prior to that visit.
We work, we work diligently with our chairs too, to write the report in such a way that it doesn't have acronyms. We have, we work with the ARC on this all the time, we're all educators, but as was noted earlier, board members not oftentimes are educators. So how can those reports be written in such a way that the layperson can understand them?
Steve Roberts.
And to that point, thank you for putting it that way, Michelle. I'm going to encourage you to get off of this slide, which has been up there almost an hour, but, but while it's up there.
Yes.
Because when, when you presented, Jeanette, I don't know, six months ago a year, and I learned that outside validation teams have been changed to visitation teams. To say I was unhappy would be putting it mildly. So I, I think one of the undercurrents is that, let, let's get the public on these teams, you know? Because the fox guarding the hen house, however you want to say it, I come at this from another direction. So I don't have a retirement or a career to protect, all, all I want to do is make it better, that's all I want to do. And so I want to encourage you to get off this slide, because it's been up there a long, long time. Just want to make the observation that when you went from outside validation to outside visitation, to me, that was maybe taking it back. Let's look at ourselves instead of being transparent, so just want to make that point, please carry on.
Appreciate that. So we've had quite a lengthy conversation already about the Accreditation Review Council. They do take their responsibility very seriously, and I don't know where we are, where you were supposed to take over and where I was supposed to take over, but.
No, you're good.
Okay, good. Again, the whole process is about a continue improvement, continuous improvement inside your system, all the while keeping your community involved as well. We talk about stakeholder groups constantly, I love that one of the ours is responsive culture, that allows you to have that conversation and respond to the culture unique to your system. These are the five steps of a growth cycle, you'll note, over time, we've gotten away from kind of a year one, two, three, four, five. We have some systems that are coming to the ARC this year that have only been involved in the process for three years. However, they had a stringent continuous improvement process in place before. They want their status now, and they're ready to start over with a new strategic planning process to include all the areas of curriculum instruction and their accreditation process. The thing I'm not really willing to bend on when systems call me about that is the three years of data collection. It takes time to see if a thing is working, right? So you have to have that, that time to know whether or not the goals that you've set, the data you have in place, are you evaluating your process to see if it's making improvement for your kiddos and for your system?
And as we, we, as we go through this process, and the systems are accredited or conditionally, whatever it might be, and they begin again a new cycle of accreditation, the whole piece of three years of data really turns into four and turns into five years of data, because they're not having to totally go back to something new. They already have gone through a process, and they should know by that time where they want to go, what are the changes that are happening, is it being successful? Where, where do they need to go next?
The other piece that we've not spent much time talking about, and Jeanette and I could spend hours with you talking about this slide, we have a long, lengthy amount of information we wanted to share. But the piece that I think comes most important out of this, to, to, again, to your point about the systems process versus a building, this is a system, the system, Jeanette says this all the time, has no kids. The building has the children, right? So that, that building data feeds up into that system-wide data. You've not talked much about the one-page legislative report that we formerly known as the building report card. Though, that document has a plethora of data on it. So that data piece, along with your process piece, are, are the two pieces that come together, as Jeanette mentioned earlier, to collide for the ARC, for the visitation team to determine, did you have a great process in place? And are you making improvements on your data? Those two things together are kind of a first blush look at a system. We're not going to spend the hours that we had on this, okay?
No.
I am going to ask a question there, though.
Sure, let me go back.
Sorry. And you talk about that one pager, which is actually two pages, because it's.
Front and back and right.
Because that does provide some longitudinal data, it provides some good data. But I would also say that there's a number of districts that have some additional data that they collect, that's important to the process.
Sorry, I, yeah, right, absolutely.
It isn't just that piece of data, it is, it is really a collection of data. And we are looking at continuous improvement, and we're looking at growth.
Right.
And that's one of the things I like to talk to the districts about, is, you know, you're looking to see, and Randy helped me with this, actually, you're looking to see if, are you meeting state goals? Well, you know, a lot of folks are not yet. But are you growing?
That's right.
Are you showing growth? And then still even further, do you have a plan for continued growth? And I think that's a good, really good way to look at that, so that statewide data, so to speak, can help. But there's also some specific district data, which would include their, and they should be sharing that with their OBT and with their chairs, so that they have really a comprehensive look at the district.
Absolutely, and so when we've been training systems right now, that's the, you said exactly what we say. This is a first blush, but there's a plethora of other data that marries with this one-page report that speaks and tells the story of your system. And I'm, I'm a firm believer in point A to point B progress, man, where's your A and where's your B? And it's going to be different for all of these systems. But are you growing, are you showing improvement toward the state board outcomes?
And actually, using the data that actually aligns directly with what you're trying to show. Because many times, school systems who don't know how to review and analyze, or take a look at improvement and evaluate it, will look at some data that really has no bearing on the, on what's really happening. So.
So, that, that, we were here going to just review where we've been.
Right, so I'm going to take over from here, because although, although I was not in this team for the zero year, and you'll probably notice, because it's probably more limited in terms of the information that's being given to you, zero year was the year that, the, the year prior to when systems came in and started their accreditation system. So during that year, the team, the TLA team ended up going out, doing quarterly training. And each quarter, they would say, this is what you need to do prior to starting, this is what you need to do prior to starting, et cetera. So this was the year that also we, we hired Kelly to do facilitation training, because the idea of having a visiting team was something new all over again, I mean, it had not happened for, for many years. And so Kelly started doing facilitation training, an OBT workbook began. The OBT service centers focused their training on, on this workbook. And then the application, the KISA application opened for the first time, and we told our systems to just go in and answer the first four questions, which was, where, who, who is submitting this? And when are you wanting to come in, in the process? And that's where the staggered implementation approach came in, where systems said, I'll start in year five, I'll start in year four, I'll start in year three, and two, and one. And, and we highly recommended at that point in time, that when they came in, they would take a look at where they were as a system in their strategic planning process, so that when they started a new accreditation cycle, things could align for them a little bit better. And I think that's why you end up seeing so many limited systems in year two, well, five. Last, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, I go through cohort years, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, and nineteen, and why you also have so many this coming year, because in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Do, do you want to go through all of this history? Do you all need to?
We're going.
You really don't, do you? Okay, I didn't think so. Stop anytime.
I, I might mention, I mean, if you're, I got from Michelle the handbook, and I've been looking through it, because we are going to credit these schools, and I think it's good, at least for me, I feel like I need a little background in that. So I think it's good to spend a little time, make sure we understand, we are scheduled to be here till twelve-thirty. If we get done early, fine, if not, well, I'm sure we will have continued conversations about KISA. So I think we can plan that this will be, in the, in the future, we'll be back again to visit with you ladies.
Do you want to keep going through this one, then?
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to continue to, everybody need to stand up for a minute, or?
I'm wondering what's the relationship between ARC and AAC.
Oh, oh, just the Accreditation Advisory Committee, Jeanette?
The Accreditation Advisory Committee is the one that provides advice to KSD staff about what should we do with KISA, whenever we have any questions about where should we go, the question about how long team visit should be, should we have, how many members should we have, should we, you know, whatever we might want to do, the accreditation criteria. We want to develop an accreditation criteria, how should that be done? It goes to them first, they begin kind of the work, or give us advice about it, and then depending upon who it relates to, we take it back to that, to that group. So on the accreditation criteria, the Accreditation Advisory Council developed an initial piece of that. And then we took it to the Accreditation Review Council, which is the one that submits the recommendation to the board to say, does this work for you? Where is it going? And then they refine the rest of it, based on their needs.
And, thank you, and, and pardon my ignorance, are there non-educators on this advisory committee? Non-educators?
On.
AAC.
Yeah, yes. And we're trying, we, we want to build that, expand that a little bit to, to include that piece too. Higher ed, a plethora of representation on there.
There might not be probably as many, but it's a representation of what Kansas looks like.
Trying to see what things may be. We really have focused our trainings.
Yeah, I mean, most of this is what we have done in order to kind of perfect the training. In two thousand and seventeen is when I came down to KISA, and I began asking questions. And so a lot of the stuff that was put into place were in order to refine and clarify what the expectation was. To end up saying that systems really thought that accreditation. To end up saying that systems really thought that accreditation was just at the system level. That's exactly what they, that's exactly what they thought. And when we started going out, training and saying, no, you need to be looking at your schools, you have no students. It was like, oh, but that's not what I thought it was. And so there was a lot of education that had to take place in that first 2017, 18, which was the first year that the systems came up for accreditation. And that's why process was probably what we focused on, because they didn't know anything else. And still, 2018, 19 was pretty much the same. We were still building that foundational piece for systems to be able to understand and for chairs to understand what really, what really was meant by being that critical friend. Okay, that it wasn't, I rub your back and you rub mine, or scratch.
It's fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My hand waving, capacity is.
This is your hand waving?
Okay, Mr. McNeese.
Well, we've been here quite a while.
I know.
And thank you both. You've done a great job. It's like, this is, you know, throwing darts at you, and you've done really well, you know? And to the board, I'd say this, I've said it before, these are really good conversations to have. This is not a inquiry in terms of what you do wrong, but this is, when we started this, you know, process, we deliberately started with a few schools rather than saying everyone, and let them volunteer, if you will. And the smart ones did it really fast, you know? And we're learning as we go, because we want this to be better than the past. And some of the issues we brought up, like, you know, chairs and, you know, you scratch my back, you know, it's, it's been there. And in the beginning, we did focus on process because we were implementing a whole new process, okay? I think what happened, we asked for an executive summary because, quite frankly, and I, I don't know how many board members remember how to get on and actually see the reports. You know, and as I'm looking at them, you know, I had to come in here and get help from technology to get back on. You know, but as I look at them, you know, the first part, you're just, you're getting a lot of background information. But then what am I really looking for? Why did I really show up at this game? And I'm, I'm looking at the data, you know, is my, what's my success and effective rate? What's my graduation rate? Okay, I can, there's a lot of box checking in the beginning, you know, do I do this, do I do that? And that has to be there. But really, now as you put down on your two-page little document you handed us and gave to the field, I just, you know, thanks for doing that. You know, it was a jolt to the system, okay? I would ask you to change one thing, though. It's still an executive summary. It's not a legislative summary. I know we, we talked about the legislature in our, our, our comments that Ann and I had with the ARC, okay? That's where, it'll be one of the targets, but the real target is still us, okay? We're accountable in many ways to them, but this accountability system is our accountability system. So I would, I would recommend and hope the board would support that it's an executive summary for the State Board of Education.
Understood.
Okay, I know where you're coming from on that, so don't, it's not a reprimand or anything.
Oh, no, no, I didn't even know, yeah, absolutely. I understand.
So, you know, we're, we're at a good place, and I'd want to say thank you to the board members for their comments. And, and as we go along, and you probably do have about number six or 12 sides, you know? But the ARC recommends to us, okay, what, who will be your accreditation levels? It is not the team or the chair.
Correct.
Okay, they send the information and then the ARC gets to read them. One thing, question I've always had is, we only have a couple of people on the ARC.
Oh, we have more than that.
Okay, because I've been to some of the meetings, and we've never had like more than 18, 15.
Yeah, that would be our, we would have that conversation with you too.
That's 300 readings they have to do.
I know. So you heard me say earlier that we've started earlier, right? We're not waiting till the April, May time to get this. We want to grow the ARC. We've talked about an apprenticeship kind of thing. One of the superintendents on the ARC said, I would love to bring a couple of people under my tutelage, if you will, as we go through this year to grow the membership. One of the areas that Jeanette and I continue to work to address is that area, private and, private systems. We've got to build some expertise in the ARC there and working with those folks, and we're working on that as well. I, I was pretty panicky about this, these larger numbers in the 21, 22. And I'm feeling, but I'm feeling better because of the conversation, the level, the level of conversation that the ARC is having. The rubric helps me a ton, helps me kind of see, this is the success criteria. We can start looking at that sooner with those systems rather than later. They're already problem-solving and talking about ways that we can address that large number. It is still a concern, don't get me wrong. But I think we are putting in place a number of things that will help. That advisory committee that we talked about, they may join us that year as well. They've been along with us the whole process. So we, we have a number of plans in place. Service centers are really eager to help. Give us some of their folks because it's a great learning opportunity for them as well. So if I'm, if I had a thing I wanted to leave you with, it was, rest assured, we're talking about this. If you're able to rest assured, we know that that is a concern for you all. It's a concern for us as well. The one-page piece is a beginning place, the process piece is the next space. And we talk a lot about how to differentiate where those 232 systems are. There may be 75 of them that are golden from the get-go. They're making great progress, as Kathy mentioned. They've got a super-duper process in place, and they've, they've tightened up and they know what they're doing. A middle ground, we need to spend a little bit more time on. And then that bottom set of systems that regretfully are calling us and saying, I need you to tell me what KISA is. Because unfortunately, that does happen, and that is still in existence. So how can we support those systems more fully? We, we work at that diligently.
Well, having been the chair when we did all this, and for those board members who are here can remember me saying, I didn't want this just to be a huge report-driven process.
Right.
You know, and I look at the reports that are on here, and they're huge. And, and many of them, we're adding to it because we want, we, we're part of the problem of making it bigger because we have bullying and all the stuff that, you know, the vaping and everything going into it. Those are the foundation issues. But I, I look at these reports, and quite frankly, I've been in ACT, I'm not sure, ACT, NCA, and whatever the heck they are today, and been involved with the accreditation process, okay? And it's, it's a lot of writing and a lot of reading, but there are things that come out of it that are very important. Some of it is just, yeah, you're doing it. We're going to find out these schools do most everything.
Right.
But they don't do most everything well all the time. And they do some things very well. And that's what I want to know. You know, and the executive summary was an opportunity to not have to read, we met on March 15th as a group, and we had a good time, and we talked about this, and we're going to do this later. You know, it, it's just filling up pages of writing, not to say that, and that's how we're trained to do it.
Your language early on was a Reader's Digest version?
Yes, yeah. And I, and that's what we want, you know? And the page I always go to is right away is graduation and success, you know, success rate, you know, what is it? What should it be? And I, I just don't want to mess around with a lot of other stuff. Though the foundation stuff and the requirements that we have have to be, yes, I did them. And you may, should be able to prove you did it. But the report, the executive summary is, you know, coming back to us, the foundations were met, these things were met. I don't need to read all of that, but I want to see is, how are they doing? Because if the data isn't there, then the other stuff doesn't make any difference. On the other hand, school districts, hopefully, just like us, we have things we do good and things we don't do so well. You know, and taken as a whole, that's who we are, you know? And we'd like to improve, like to have a diet here, do a little bit of golf there, and, you know, it's in my life. But this is, this is the life of the students that are coming. And what are they doing to really provide for them to meet the expectations we have in, in our vision? That's connecting the vision and the process is, is data.
Would you like to work in our department? You just articulated it very well.
And I, I would, this is great questions, because we need to know more, you know? But I have to honestly say that as the chair of the board at this time, when we put this together, this isn't turning out the way I envisioned and hoped it would, you know? And I don't mean that as a slam, that it's like the process we're in right now. We expected to do this, you know, and now this is what's coming out. I see parts, but I'm, you know, working on it. And I'm, and I know Ann and I want to continue to work on the executive summary because that's, I think, going to be the heart of what I really wanted, you know? School districts are doing a great job, and we need to be able to tell that without putting a lot of camouflage on it. Get right to the point, we're doing it. The second part is, if there are things happening in districts that they're not doing well for one reason or another, okay? When do we go to conditional or non-accreditation? What's the threshold? And who sets that threshold?
So.
I mean, we've talked about, now I'm getting, I'm moving the whole conversation to another level.
No.
You know, what's the threshold? What, I know when, you know, I know a golf handicap and when it's good and when it's not, okay?
Right.
I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, I don't know that, and I don't care.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't care. But we need to know what the threshold is of good and what's not.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
You don't need to know golf, I do, okay? But you don't, but we do need to know here, because, you know, that information, we're in the game in this game.
Right.
Okay, we need to know what's accreditation, what's not accreditation, and what's conditional accreditation. And I haven't heard anybody, you have a rubric, have I seen that?
We'll get you a copy. I thought we did, but yeah.
We had provided it before it was finished.
Thank you, I'm sorry, but that's where I was going with this is.
Mine's a cleaner copy, but.
Like, the ARC's going to say you're accredited, what does that actually mean?
Exactly.
And what does it mean that you're conditionally accredited or not accredited?
Right. The piece that you all are going to have to tackle sooner or later is what to do with the system that the ARC brings to you and says, are you, they are conditionally accredited. I think you'll see that sooner rather than later. They will make their recommendation to you, and then, then we need to have a deeper conversation. The, the thing that we have told the ARC now is, when you are ready to say, system XYZ is conditionally accredited because of XYZ, then provide that system what they need to do to get better, where are their areas for improvement? Where are they lacking on the rubric, and what is it they need to do for next steps? So, yes, we, we have struggled over the last two years with this piece. It's undergone many, many edits. You'll see that it's red, yellow, and green for a purpose, good to go, maybe not yet. And, and then they would take into determination where, what areas. There are some spaces on it where they could be not yet making gigantic improvement. But if there are spaces relative to your vision and to your goals, that they know, the ARC knows, that's their area of focus.
Okay, we have a couple, another question. Jim Porter.
If you are not accredited, let's say you're conditionally accredited, is that a five-year term, or can you get off of that?
So as soon as you can provide the evidence and satisfy to the ARC a change of recommendation, then we, again, because we tried to make this really individual, we've not said three months, six months, nine months. It's however long you and your system need to show some growth and improvement as evidenced by what?
But it's not until the next five?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
As a matter of fact, then they start their cycle while they're still being conditionally accredited. They don't wait until be fully accredited to then.
Start a new cycle.
They're starting already their five-year process along with that.
Janet Waugh?
Okay, next question. What happens if you're not, not accredited? Do we take over, or what happens?
We have, we've not, we've not been there yet. And so I guess my answer would be, we would have to have some longer conversation about that. I, in my mind, the other piece to that puzzle is, we'll know prior to them coming. So, for example, the systems that are coming to you all in the spring, we already have an idea of who might be conditionally accredited. So we're working with them now and have been this semester to try to provide evidence of growth and improvement in an area where there might be some weakness. If a system comes and they're, in September, we see that they're, I am going to make a call and say, let's not do this yet. And we need to come and talk with you about some areas you need to really work on showing growth and improvement in.
We can get also for you the KISA regulations that you have adopted because it does, even though we've never been to the place where we not accredited a school district, it says you'll have options at that point. Now, those options are takeover, those options are dissolving the school district, and, and, I mean, that would be a sad day for everyone, but there are options that are laid out to you in the regulations if you ever got to that stage.
Thank you. So for yet this spring, what will be, like, how many school districts will be coming to us this spring?
You have thirty.
And what's kind of the timeline of when you'll bring those?
Right.
You have 30 systems coming. Fifteen of them are privates.
Public.
And special purpose. So for instance, School for the Death would be one of those coming up for accreditation, KISA accreditation. And then we have Hartspring, which is another special purpose school. And then the other 13 are private schools that are doing Cognia for that. And then we have 15 public systems coming for accreditation. We have asked them to do their visits by March 15th. The Accreditation Review Council comes in in April and will review at that point in time. We have in the past brought both, both the public and the privates together. It's up to you whether or not you want that to happen in that same fashion again. We'll be glad to do that. But we want to put the process that we've indicated in the regulations in place, which is that once the ARC does their review, that the system has 15 days to respond back to that review. So that would mean that it might not be until June that you get the first set coming to you saying, these are some that we're going to be recommending. And then the ARC intends to take a look in June for the private systems, the ones that are doing Cognia, because most, some of those reports that we get from Cognia don't come into us until the end of May.
So your first blush would be June of the public systems.
Okay, and I can see, and I don't know that necessarily has to be public or private, but the schools that do Cognia, that is different.
It is, right.
The process is different, and I can see where that take, because some of the publics are going to do Cognia, are doing it.
And 2022, you'll have some.
Yeah, so I, I can see that coming in. So at that point in time, then, at least by June, we will have at least the first round of recommendations from the ARC.
That's correct.
So maybe prior to that, we'll need to have some more conversation about what to expect as far as the ARC, ARC and what the executive summary might be looking like.
Absolutely.
I think that would be.
March or April, which would you, what would be your pleasure?
We'll, we'll talk about it and see what would be best.
Yeah, it'd be great, okay.
But I think it would be good for us to get an idea of what a mock-up of the executive summary would look like, including the, and there is some process piece to it, but there's also a product piece, which is going to be the data and those kinds of things. So I think, I, I would think that would be helpful. We've got a couple more questions. Ann Maugh?
Michelle, I can't remember, where can we find those rubrics?
I'll make sure you don't leave without one today. You may have my very one right now.
Is that online somewhere too, or?
Not yet. It's going to be online.
Oh, okay, yeah, if you could get a copy, that'd be great. I noticed there's, I was looking at one, at two different districts. One that's doing pretty well on everything and one that's really struggling. And on the OVT, on the one that was really struggling, because they have their two goals, like whatever, you know, relevance and relationships. And they had all the progress on that. But I know they were not doing very well on the five things, kindergarten readiness and post-secondary and all that. And at the end, the OVT chair said, this is what they're doing in each of those five areas. But the district that was doing really well, there wasn't anything there about our five goals. Is that, is this just something the one OVT thought, I need to say something about, or is it, are they supposed to? How do we know how they're doing on our five areas?
So that is again, a training piece for us. You heard Jeanette mention a Zoom call yesterday. She had 50 folks on that call yesterday. They are, those are chairs, and those are systems. She's had upwards, upwards to 100 or more on those calls. It is a massive training piece for us to communicate these things that we've shared this morning with the field and to be sure that everyone is hearing it, seeing it multiple ways and multiple ways and over and over and over again.
Yeah, because I'm not sure there was an actual spot on the OVT report to show, here's how they're doing on those five things, but this chair put it in there anyway.
Right.
Right, so some of those reports, because of that same information, are being adjusted a little bit where the foundational structures, where we talk about compliance and foundational structures, we don't have it listed specifically what the, the eight foundational structures are, so that they can write them in there. So some actually put the information in, and some just do a general statement. So we're looking at going back and really outlining each one of those, the same with the board goals, so that there would be no confusion that we want an answer for each of those.
Okay.
And so then we have to decide, how does that come to you all in an executive summary? How does that narration come to you in an executive summary?
Ben Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two things. First of all, I was online, reading through some reports as you evidenced last week in email. And some of the concerns I have is, is uploading and making sure the data is with the school it's at. I know they're overworked and I know their paycheck is just huge for it. Because I was reading through some and halfway through the report, it shifted districts entirely. Like, ah, these buildings aren't in the school district. So I had, I had some concerns there and I had already expressed that last week. And I'm pretty sure it was just an input error, not.
It actually, I called the chair up and she said, I put the report in the wrong system. And she's chattering too, and she couldn't get it all out, so we took care of it for her.
Yeah. The other thing I have, and it's something that I brought back earlier this year when we were accrediting schools this year, is, is through those that, not advanced ed, but the new one, the.
Cognia?
Cognia, that one. It'll take me eight years to realize that.
It's okay.
Cognia, and they'll change their name probably five times between now and then anyway. Cognia, some of the schools that were using Cognia, and some of the private ones that we accredited this year, only had one goal on some of it. And I made the explicit statement, this is the last time I will ever vote for that. And I'm holding it too, so I don't know. When you guys are going through this, this is feedback for you guys when you guys are looking at it. If they're using Cognia and they're going through KISA, especially if they're a public school, they need to talk about those two goals. We're far enough in the process now that they've had enough time to do that, in my opinion. So that's just feedback and reiterating a point I made when we went through the accreditation process this year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Randy.
I don't know the exact number, but Jeanette, you're going to help me, I think, and well, maybe you can put it together. I've been using somewhere between seven and nine years. But if you, if you think about the time that we were in, no child left behind and just in compliance, to the time that we just accredited every school district. By the time we get to years, however, again, we, we count years, one and two or four and five, where we hit 232 school districts. By the time we get there, 21, 22, we'll be somewhere between seven and nine years from which those systems were ever truly in an accreditation system. That is important for you to understand that when we get to that stage, even really 2021, when we're at 68, most superintendents and principals that are currently practicing have never been through accreditation. This is a shock to all of the system. And this system is about improving those systems. But as Steve said, at the end of the day, there are 10 people accountable to the students of Kansas and their families. And the, um, you don't have to look very far to Missouri to see, Kansas City, Missouri, see what happens if you use, the state takes over a school. It doesn't, that hasn't fared very well. So I'm not saying we want to get there, but at the same time, there has to be accountability to the amount of money being spent and to the kids. And that is the tension that all of you are going to strongly feel when you have to cast a vote to, to conditionally accredit that first school district, especially if it is in your district. Just want you to be aware of that. It will happen. It will happen. That's not the kiss of death, but it's a sign that, that that district has to improve and get better for the kids and the family that it serves. And we're trying to help an entire state that for the most part has never, ever gone through an accreditation cycle. So this is just, it's big. And so I want to applaud the, the two people. These are the only people running this right now in our whole organization. Well, and Brad and, but these are the only two. We're short-staffed right now and not, you know, of any problem, but just a, a good employee is not with us right now. So it's not, we, and we have a volunteer system that leads to an ARC making a recommendation. I think the ARC's going to do their job well. It's easier to train that group because you see them over and over. It's harder to train those OVT chairs and teams because there's just so many of them. So we have to continue to have this conversation over and over and over so that you're ready come 30, come 68, come 232. And that, all of you know that there's going to be some hard votes, however they turn out and however you vote, to be cast. And not saying to a school district, you're horrible, is that you can do better and you have to do better for us to continue to go down that process. So thank you, the two of you. I know what a big lift it's been for you the last several months in particular. And thanks to all of you. But when you're talking to school districts and they say, where did this come from? We've outlined the process all the way along. But as Michelle said, you're still going to get comments. What is KISA? When did that happen? That's, that's reality, so thank you.
Thank you.
And again, from the board, thank you too for the presentation. We kind of, you know, threw some darts at you and.
No, that's great.
You deflected just fine.
Thank you for the conversation.
But it was, it was good and we appreciate the work that you're doing and we know you'll be back. Randy's comments are well-taken and well-spoken. And I do think we need to remember, this is a different process actually than we've ever had before. So we need to keep that in mind. It's going to be a learning process for everybody. So I want to thank you guys and I thank everybody for the questions and we are adjourned. Thank you.